zoning and building committee meeting of January fourteenth, two thousand and ten. Will the minute taker please call roll?
Alderman Chocky.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Cadella.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
All here.
Alderman Lewitin.
Here.
Okay, quorum is present. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the December tenth, two thousand and nine meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. The only item for discussion this evening, well, actually, before we go into this, I believe Mr. Forrest has a very brief update on the train station that he'd like to give us first.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just in case any of you didn't, were unable to receive the email that I sent, the train station did open to the public last Wednesday, the sixth. Currently, the hours at the station is open and available for the public is four thirty a.m. to seven p.m., at which point the doors automatically lock. Seven days a week is that schedule at this point. The coffee vendor service opened yesterday, and they appeared to have a successful day. I wasn't able to talk to Gus today, but that seemed to go well. Really, the main thing we have left to finish on the interior is the benches, which we're still trying to determine exactly what style we're going to go with. I was able to contact the park district, and they graciously allowed us to temporarily use a couple of benches that they had in storage. So there are some places for people to sit in the station. What we were finding, people were leaning against the wall, putting their feet up on the wall, and scuffing them all. So we decided we would go with some temporary benches. At this point, the contractors are working on the punch list items that were prepared by the architect, the mechanical design engineer, and staff. And that's pretty much it. The grand opening has been officially set for Tuesday, February ninth, at eleven fifteen a.m. Hopefully, all of you will be able to make it. And eleven fifteen a.m.
Send out a notice?
Yes, invitations will be sent. They're at the printers right now. And we'll try and get as many dignitaries there as possible. Ross Clicker and Mimi Anderson will be coordinating that. So unless anybody has any other questions about the train station, that's the update.
I think just briefly, I'll assume that there's some invoices out there, but I think you've been listening to the council long enough to know that you're working on the punch list before you ask for approval of any outstanding invoices.
Yes, we do have, there is one more pay request that I received earlier this week and haven't really had a chance to review it, but then we anticipate there'll be one more pay request after that, once we consolidate all the little odds and ends. And then, of course, we still do have a retainage that we're holding on that.
Okay, good, thank you. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I did have, I went over to the other morning to see how the coffee shop was going, and there was some commuters that was there. And I'll tell you one thing, they are very happy the train station's there. There's been no bad mouth about it or anything, so they are very pleased with it. They are very honored to have a new train station here. So I just want you to know that I did go over there, and they were very happy.
Alderman Chocky?
Yeah, I was just wondering, have you purchased a new door handle? Strong one?
Yes, the door handles are being reworked. We worked with the manufacturer, and yes, they are fixed. One other quick thing, I did put a couple of photos on the dais for everybody. I'll give everybody around a phone calls to get some input, more, most particularly about page two, as far as an installation to go on the, one of the interior walls of the station.
Okay, if there's nothing else on the train station, I will move on to an item for report and recommendation. Not yet, no. The adoption of the two thousand and nine ICC International Energy Conservation Code. I believe, in short, this is unavoidable, but you can probably elaborate beyond that.
You're correct, Mr. Chairman, yes. Recently, the state of Illinois adopted legislation that was to be effective January first, mandating that all municipalities adopt and enforce the most current edition of the International Code Council, International Energy Conservation Code, within nine months of its publication. This means we are now required to adopt the two thousand and nine ICC Energy Code as part of the City of Wood Dale Building Code. Currently, we're enforcing the two thousand and three edition, but we do have to adopt the two thousand and nine. As I said in my memo, staff is currently working on revising our local building code amendments, and we anticipate later this winter coming to council to adopt the entire two thousand and nine code group. But at this point, we do need to adopt this one now and add it to our code. Basically, the two thousand and nine code is probably the strictest energy code that the International Code Council has come up with. We've been reviewing our plans currently for compliance to two thousand and three code, as in two thousand and six, state of Illinois passed legislation requiring municipalities to enforce the two thousand and one code at a minimum. We've been enforcing the two thousand and three, mainly on commercial buildings, because these requirements did not apply to residential buildings. At this point, they will now apply to residential buildings as well. What the code basically covers is newly conditioned space, which means an entirely new building that's built, new construction within existing buildings, for example, an office that's built in a previously unconditioned warehouse, additions, alterations, and repairs to existing buildings have to comply to the new energy code, mixed-use buildings, commercial properties, commercial residential occupancies, and actually, a change in occupancy that would result in an increase in energy usage would also have to comply to the new energy code. There are some exemptions from the code. For example, if somebody were to install storm windows over existing windows, that's going to increase the performance of the building, so the rest of the building would not have to comply to the energy code. Same with fixing damaged or broken glass, filling a newly created or altered ceiling, which would be a minor remodeling if they're going to add insulation to that and improve the performance of the building, the rest of the building would be exempt from having to comply to the full code. Re-roofing, replacing existing doors, replacing less than half of the light fixtures in a house, and replacements of bulbs, they would not have to comply to the code. Right now, the code classifies climate zones by state and county, and they've come up with all these formulas, they analyze the annual temperatures, how much moisture we have, and what the humidity is. And what they do is they look at the total thermal envelope of the building, is what they call it. And buildings are now required to have a certain R value, and then we also have to review what's called the U factor, which is how much air actually, how much air change over there is in a building, how much air you lose and fresh air comes in. So the building has to be constructed to comply with that. For the first time since two thousand and nine, the code actually requires these air leakage factors be verified when you construct a new building. Either you can get a point-by-point inspection during construction, or you can simply get what they call a blower door test at the end of construction. That's where they actually seal the building, they take the front door off, they put a specially fixed door on there, and they actually blow air into the building and pressurize the building, and then they keep track of that and see how much air actually goes out of the building. So the code is actually, it's pretty detailed, and it's getting pretty high-tech. If we, or I should say, when we comply with this code, this also serves as a basis for federal tax credits for energy-efficient homes, energy-efficient standards for federal residential buildings and manufactured housing, and under the federally insured energy-efficient mortgage programs, which are FHA and VA, and also the secondary mortgage market, Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, properties that meet the IECC codes are considered energy-efficient and eligible for a two-point increase in the applicant's debt-to-income qualifying ratio on loans, which would allow borrowers to qualify for a larger loan amount and a more energy-efficient home. So again, in order to be in compliance with state of Illinois requirements, we're requesting that the council adopt the two thousand and nine code now. Any questions?
Alderman Police?
John, I just had one. If we approve this, let's say, tonight, the next week at council, your staff is ready to make all the inspections, they're up to speed on all this stuff?
Correct.
Or do we need a little time for them to, or they got to take a class or something?
No, we're ready to go. Actually, these formulas are so complicated that there are actually computer programs that we've gotten from the ICC. It's called ResCheck and ComCheck. And during the course of a plan review, we open that program, we punch in what kind of windows they're going to have, what kind of insulation, what the structural, the building materials are going to be, run it through the formula, and that lets us know if the building complies or not. So we are set up and ready for that.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
John, two questions. The energy credit that you get, wasn't that a one-time, and it's, that ends at a certain time? Was that the?
I would have to check on that.
I believe it is. The other question, how does this fall under the sound insulation program for residential sound insulation from O'Hare? How is this falling under that?
I would have to compare what, what they're doing with the sound insulation, because the sound insulation, again, they're going specifically to try and increase the home's resistance to sound levels, whereas this is increasing it for energy efficiency. I would have to, I mean, the requirements that you have now for insulation in a home and how tight a home has to be, I would have to think they're very close. But I will check on that and let you know.
Well, that's, that's the only concern I have, is that, you know, some of these houses in Wood Dale's getting sound insulation, and where are they, is there going to be a modification because O'Hare's doing it, or whoever may be doing it, or I just, that's my concern.
Right. Well, if the soundproofing installation exceeds these requirements, then there's not an issue.
Right, but I don't know if they do. That's my concern.
If they don't, and they're going to go in and re-insulate and change windows in a building, then it would have to comply to the code, so we may have to work with O'Hare on that.
So that's the only thing I would ask you to look into. Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I will entertain a, a motion to approve the adoption of the two thousand and nine energy code.
Second.
All right, I'll make the motion. You'll second it? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Okay, the items to be considered at future meetings, the Unified Development Ordinance from Land Vision. Is there anything anybody else would specifically like to see in the near future? Okay, hearing nothing, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm calling to order the Finance and Administration Committee meeting. Will the minute taker please reflect the same members are present? I declare a quorum. I make a motion to approve minutes dated December tenth, two thousand and nine. Is there a second? And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a report and recommendation on the five-year capital improvement program. And I would like to give a little background for those attending tonight, as well as watching on TV, that this is a, a plan over two thousand and eleven through two thousand and fifteen, and so we have it on a five-year schedule. And what it does is it lays out the capital improvement projects throughout the city of Wood Dale. First being priorities, basically, there's three main priorities when we compile the plan. Number one, they're projects that would readily affect basic city operations and related to immediate health or safety functions, or which are mandated by state or federal agencies. Secondly, they're projects which previously have been initiated and are a completion of subsequent phases. And thirdly, projects which provide for the renovation of existing facilities, resulting in preservation of the city's prior investments, or projects which would reduce maintenance costs over time. And regarding funding sources, and we'll get a little more in detail as we step through a few slides, however, funding sources for this plan come from two basic areas. The General Capital Projects Fund, which accommodates those capital projects associated with functions, and the General Fund, which include transportation costs, building and grounds, and miscellaneous improvements. And then, secondly, the Water and Sewer Fund is affected here with the capital projects. So that includes improvements with major repairs to the city's water and sanitary sewer systems, and those will be noted in the plan as well. And then also, the, the funding for the projects themselves in those two categories, the General Capital Projects Fund comes from like three main revenue sources, the utility tax, secondly, the non-home rule city-only sales tax, and then, thirdly, an annual transfer of surplus monies from the Road and Bridge Fund. With that being said, there's six sections, one through five are projects that will be included in the budget for two thousand and eleven. And then the sixth section includes projects which are not funded. They're not yet funded, but they are on the radar screen and continue discussion and looking for funding sources for them. And those will be our unfunded projects. With that being said, I'm going to ask our city manager, Mr. Dalthwaite, to start us out on the projected expenses for the entire capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm going to run through two or three different slides, take no more than about ten minutes, and then turn it over to the council if you have any questions on specific projects. And I would turn your attention under tab one, page six, which is showing up on the, on the screen. This is a summary of our projected projects for the next five years. Two thousand and eleven fiscal year, which really starts in May of two thousand and ten and goes to April of two thousand and eleven, and then two thousand and twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. In next fiscal year, we anticipate a total of almost six million dollars in capital programs, or capital projects in two thousand and twelve, four million dollars in two thousand and thirteen, seven million dollars two thousand and fourteen, six point eight million, and then in two thousand and fifteen, thirty-eight million dollars, about thirty-six million of which is planning for a new, or for an expanded wastewater treatment plant. So you see the numbers jump in two thousand and fifteen, but that's one major project. I understand that there are some folks in the audience tonight who might be interested in a project that we've got in the budget for next year, the sidewalks on Oak Street. If you don't want to sit around for the next hour or so, I can tell you that that project is included in the two thousand and eleven fiscal year, sidewalks on both sides of Oak Street. So if you're interested in that, I can assure you right now that that's already in the planning phases. If you'll turn to page seven. If you go to page seven, this is our cash flow projections for the General Capital Fund, and as Alderman Winger said, these are the projects not related to water and sewer, but are part of our general fund, transportation projects, building improvements, miscellaneous improvements, that kind of thing. At the beginning of this coming fiscal year, we anticipate a cash balance in the General Capital Fund of four million dollars. We expect to collect about a million dollars in utility tax. Where are we here? Can't work, Jeff. Two point two million dollars in the sales tax, twenty-two thousand dollars in interest, a hundred fifty thousand dollar transfer from the Road and Bridge Fund, and the last of a two-year transfer out to the Water and Sewer Fund of seven hundred thousand dollars, and then projected expenses of four point three million. And we expect that at the end of fiscal year two thousand and eleven, we'll have two point four million dollars in the bank. Carrying that forward to the next column, the two point four million cash, the revenues that we expect to have, projected expenditures of two point six million, money in the bank at the end of two thousand and twelve, three point three million, and then, again, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen. And if everything goes as planned, we still see some free cash at the end of two thousand and fifteen of about four point four eight million dollars, which will get us in a comfortable position for the out years. And again, these numbers change from year to year, depending upon the actual revenue stream that we see, the actual expenditures that we see coming down the line with respect to bidding, and any changes that may be affected from one year to another. Now, the only numbers that you really need to focus in on right now are the fiscal year two thousand and eleven. Those projects in two thousand and eleven will become part of the overall operating budget that we pass in March of this coming year. Two thousand and twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen are just projections. We've got some numbers out there in two thousand and thirteen that we might need to do a road project. It might be that that road deteriorates quickly, more quickly than we thought. We might have to move that up to two thousand and twelve. It might be that it's in better shape than we thought, we can move back to two thousand and fourteen. This is just a, a plan. It's sort of like putting your own house plan together. You think that you might need a new roof in two thousand and thirteen, and a hailstorm hits, and all of a sudden, you got to move that roof back to two thousand and twelve, and maybe take some two thousand and twelve projects and move them back to two thousand and thirteen. So that's very, very fluid. It's just a five-year conceptual plan to let the council know where we see ourselves going down the line, and give us an idea of how we can stagger these projects to make sure that we've got enough money to pay for those in each of the years. And then if you go to the next page, page eight, that's our cash flow statement for the Water and Sewer Capital Fund. We see a beginning cash balance next fiscal year of three hundred and eleven thousand dollars. We see money coming in from the Water and Sewer Fund, the operating fund of eight hundred thousand dollars in oh eleven, a million three in twelve, a million five in thirteen, a million eight in fourteen, and a million eight in two thousand and fifteen. A little bit of interest earnings, the one-time transfer from the Capital Projects Fund that I mentioned a minute ago, about seven hundred thousand dollars. And then what we call is our, our glob revenue, grants, loans, other financing sources and bonds, and that's the money we've penciled in to handle the expansion of the sewer treatment plant. We don't know if it'll be grants, we don't know if it'll be loans yet. We know that the design costs start to kick in in fiscal year two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and fourteen, and in two thousand and fifteen, we're really to the point where we have to figure out how we're going to finance that whole thing. And right now, that's just a placeholder. We've tossed it in there so we can make sure that the numbers balance. And then the ending cash balance, I would note, in two thousand and thirteen, we're a little bit upside down. At the end of two thousand and thirteen, we see a negative balance of seven hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. In two thousand and fourteen, a negative balance of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then in two thousand and fifteen, when we get those grants, loans, or bonds, it gets right side up. Is that a problem? Not particularly, because we have enough cash in our other funds to be able to handle that. The accountants may make a note in the audit in two thousand and thirteen that says, by the way, your fund is in the hole seven hundred thousand dollars. And in two thousand and fourteen, your fund, your capital fund might be in the hole of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But given the fact that over the five-year, six-year, seven-year period, we anticipate having enough money to handle all these projects, that's more of an accounting issue than it is a real practical issue. We can absorb a one- or two-year downside as long as there's enough funds in the other areas to take care of that. So I'm, I'm not particularly concerned about that. But I would bring it to your attention that we're looking at a smaller fund balance in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, and then we turn a little bit upside down for a couple of years. So basically, what you've got in the next few tabs are all of the projects we've identified over the next five years, by year and by funding source. Our staff is here tonight to talk and answer any questions that you might have about those. I would mention the unfunded projects, the council-funded design and analysis of four sewer projects that we have not included in the five-year CIP. A drainage project on North Cedar that really impacts only two houses and costs about eighty thousand dollars. A drainage project at the corner of Windsor and Catalpa that has some localized flooding on the streets, but no significant, in our opinion, no significant detriment at two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. A drainage project on South Cedar that has minimal benefit, but our estimates are about five hundred thousand dollars. And then drainage and reconstruction of the Forest View Harvey area, just south of Irving Park, at more than two million dollars. And because of the fact that the three of the four really are of minimal benefit, we have not chosen or not recommended funding at this stage of the game. If the council wants to take a look at some of those and include it in the five-year plan, there's money. Brad, can you go back to the last slide? If you go back to that ending cash balance, there's enough money to handle those projects if you want to. We've not recommended them at this stage of the game because we think that the benefit compared to the cost is inconsequential, and we're leaving that up to the council on a policy basis as to whether you want to include that in the five-year plan. You've got enough money to do it, we just haven't recommended it at this stage of the game. Other than that, most of the projects that you see in that book are projects that you saw last year. We're just moving them up a year, making a change here or there, a little tweak here or there, depending upon the nature of the project. And Alderman Winger, our staff is ready to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. And first being, as we go through the sections, is it your recommendation that the council should focus mostly on fiscal year twenty ten, eleven, and maybe twenty eleven, twenty twelve, and not so much on maybe the fifth year, just understanding it's a project out there?
That would be my recommendation. Because they're so far out, and you never know what's going to happen over the next four years. I think you're really, if you're going to drill down on anything, I would recommend you drill down on the projects identified as, as fiscal year two thousand and eleven.
Okay, thank you. And, and then, secondly, I know that in two thousand and fifteen, we do show the expenditure of the treatment plant, and while we haven't decided on which alternative we're going to take, that this number is more of an estimate, a blended estimate of, let's put a number out there so, so we can plan for something, but we just haven't defined it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Chocky?
Mr. Manager, you show surpluses of two million four hundred thousand, three million three hundred thousand, three million eight hundred thousand down the line. In this economy, and with other towns like Wheaton and Roselle laying people off, how do you account for us having surpluses? I mean it as a positive, but there are people out there that are wondering, how are we doing this? What's, what's going on that we have money and other people, other towns are laying people off?
Well, first of all, I, I make the distinction between the operating fund and the capital fund. And we're talking now just about the capital fund. And the city council, when they went to the voters for the referendum on the sales tax, verbally committed, it's not in writing, it's not set in stone, but she basically committed that she'd take that sales tax and earmark it for capital improvements. And we've had a history throughout the years of earmarking our utility tax for capital improvements, and that's the majority of our revenue source, and it just so happens that our sales tax hasn't gone down a whole lot, and the utility tax hasn't gone down very much at all, and we've got enough coming in on utility tax and And we've got enough coming in on utility tax and sales tax to handle the capital projects that we see coming down the line over the next five years. On the operating side, we're fortunate, more fortunate than other cities, that we have a strong cash balance, that we can weather any short-term downturn in the economy, and we're able to withstand the economic distress. I never thought I would say this before, but in some ways, I'm sort of glad now that we don't have a lot of auto dealerships in town. If you look at cities like Naperville and Schaumburg that rely upon sales tax, a lot of which comes from auto dealerships, and the auto economy is in the dumper, they're having a lot of stress. We don't have that kind of opiate, if you will, in terms of reliance on sales tax from auto dealerships. And our sales tax and income taxes on the general fund operating side have been a lot stronger than some of our cities around us. And we're in relatively good shape. You know, you see articles all the time in papers about layoffs and furloughs and attrition. And last year, we were able to give you a budget that had a $200,000 surplus. I'm not sure we can do the same next fiscal year, but we've got enough reserves to be able to withstand the short-term downturn in the economy and wait for it to turn around. So we're in relatively good shape.
So in other words, you're saying we spend less than what we're taking in?
So far.
We're not overspending?
Over the last five or six, over the last however many years, you have run a surplus. You spend, you spend less than you take in, and that's the reason why you have that comfortable reserve.
Alderman calls.
Ms. Winger, we have a gentleman here from Royal Oaks that wants to speak. Would you?
Okay, but I'm going to recognize first the other person that asked to be recognized. But before I do that, I want to make sure, are there any other questions for Mr. Dowdway before we turn to that segment?
Okay.
But I will do that, Alderman calls. Alderman Lewitin.
Thank you, Chairman. Before I ask Wally a question, I would like to make a statement that I did pass out flyers telling people that tonight we would be looking at the CIP, and that if there's a project that they want to make sure gets passed on from committee to council, to be here to see how we behave. Now, I'm making analogy. We have a primary next month to elect candidates for the general election. In the general election, you get a winner. Well, right now, the council decides who's the winner of the money. And right now, this is the primary where we decide what goes on. As you heard Wally say, nothing is in stone. Things are susceptible to change. So if you want to see your pet project is here, you come and you look at it. And then when it goes to the council for actual vote, that's when you get a chance to speak and say, yes, I like what you passed, go ahead. With T-19, we are in the budget for $205,000 to do sidewalks on both sides of the street. And it'll be done sometime between May and November, or probably the first part of 2/11. That's depending on how Wally schedules his workflow. But the participation by those people who came today shows their commitment to a democracy, to go through the procedures and be here to show their support for a particular project. Now that I said that, I'm glad I said it. Now I'll get to Wally for the question I'd like him to answer. We have a water fund that is based on the concept of an enterprise fund, which means that it is run like a business to show a profit, except that we don't have profits in government. We have reserves to do future work, and that's why it's called an enterprise fund. The water that's provided to the citizens is done on an enterprise basis. And that means that the water income must equal the expenses out with the concept that there should be a reserve for future projects or an unexpected break in the main, or any unexpected thing. I mean, talk about unexpected, the example of the streets where they found contamination on School Street. They had to, we had to put, the city had to put out an extra $30,000 or $40,000 to create a retention area for the dirt, and to aerate it with the bacteria that would eat up the contaminants. And so we have a special hill by the train station on Commercial. And that's an example of an emergency. And that's what an enterprise fund does, is have the money there so we don't have to have an emergency tax or a debt. Now that I said that, I think you already have guessed where I'm going. Your glob includes loans, not just grants, but loans and bonds. Those loans and those bonds will have to be paid for with increased water revenue. That means every time there's another million dollars out there of debt...
Excuse me, Alderman. Excuse me, though, I'd like you to stick to projects.
That is a project.
So you are allowed to speak to a project, not budgeting, but we're showing funding sources, but I really want to keep this to projects.
That project is right there in 2014, $36 million. And when you explain to me and to everybody how that's going to be paid for, words of bond and a loan. Thank you. Your floor.
How is the money going to be paid to repay bonds and loans on an enterprise fund?
We're going to get into a more detailed discussion of funding sources for the wastewater treatment plant expansion in two weeks at our meeting on the 28th. But to give you, you know, a quick and dirty summary, there will probably have to issue some bonds. There may be some federal or state grants out there. There's a revolving loan fund that the state administers right now, and there may be some other financing sources coming down the line. We don't know yet. We know that the wastewater treatment plant expansion will cost, including design, somewhere between $35 and $38 million. We're going to bring in our financial advisor in two weeks to talk about some of the funding strategies that we can apply to those. And the good news is, is you've got two or three years to figure that out. But ultimately, if it's bonds, the bonds will be repaid through increases in our water and sewer revenues, our water and sewer rates.
Okay, that was a predetermined answer. I knew what your answer would have to be, and I repeat it. It will be higher water rates, and that's something we all have to consider when we decide to spend $38 million.
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct.
Okay, then it looks like there's no other questions on this piece. So, Ms., if you would like to come to the podium, and if you could state your name and address, and then your question or comment. And while you're walking over there, I would like to mention, though, this project for the 2010, 2011, for the sidewalks on Oak Avenue, the residents are worried for it, and that street should be very proud because you've certainly come together and did the petition and showed your support for the sidewalks, the majority on the petition. And also of your alderman, your worried-for alderman, because they brought the issue forward and fought for it, and now it's in our capital improvement plan. So it's on its way. So that's something to really be proud of. If you'd like to go ahead.
Sure. My name is Leslie Lesz. I'm at 348 Oak Avenue. And I'm glad that it's on, you know, the books for...
2011. I'd like to see it pushed to 2010, though. I think you said your fiscal year starts in May?
Right.
Okay, so...
2010, '11. So when we say 2011, that means it starts this May.
May of 2010, of this year. Gotcha. So then, do we have a more specific date on when that's going to happen? But we know for sure it's going to happen. Everybody seems in agreement with that.
I would never make that representation until it's actually in the budget, and there's a work crew out there digging and putting it in. I mean, there's too many things that could happen along the way, but this is well on its way to being here. It's in the project. We've identified that there is, you know, money there that we're planning on being there.
Uh-huh. Right, with your beginning balances at the beginning of the year, $4 million, I would think that it would get done for 2010. My daughter's 11. I'd like to see her be able to utilize the sidewalks. And I know some other residents on Oak Avenue had an issue with, when there's a train up at Irving, and that side part that cuts over and gets people onto Wooddale Road, they've been using oak, and I think cedar is a cut-through, because, you know, when the train backs up and people are cutting through, people aren't stopping, people are speeding. I think that the police department came out there, and if I'm not correct, they said they monitored it for 30 days. Is that correct?
I'm not sure. I've seen it before.
They claimed to monitor it for, I believe it was 30 days, but...
I'm not sure if it would be 30 days. It's so...
Remember.
But is that important to the conversation? Because it's...
Well, I just, there's an empty house across the street from me, and that's where that policeman sat, and I saw him there for about a week. And so, you know, I would just like to, you know, reiterate that I'd like to see it done as soon as possible. If you can squeeze it into, you know, 10 instead of 11, that would be better because of that overflow of traffic and the speeding and things like that. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our Royal Oaks representative?
Could you put this in the center of the presentation?
Well, they got us to be able to see it right in front of there. It's good. Appreciate it. Just a, I am Frank Moran, Director of Grounds for Royal Oaks Homeowners Association. I am part of a seven-member board, and we are volunteers, and we don't get paid for our service.
This chart, I can explain it. This is the north entrance.
Oh, Frank, we're going to get you a microphone so you could move about.
Okay. That's okay. The north entrance is here. Here's 83. I'm standing in front of this Alderman Schawke. And then we come here to the south entrance. There's one way in, and then there's one way out on 283. What I want to talk about today is the watershed engineering report that's coming regarding the streets.
Frank, if you could hold that microphone just a little...
Okay. Regarding the streets, for reconstruction on 2013, this report, I lost track of my idea here, I'm very sorry.
That's okay.
Anyway, the water report, or shed report, is what everybody's worried about. We have many swales throughout Royal Oaks here. And this particular area right here, just one area right here in this lot, there's about a four-foot, four-and-a-half-foot ditch. There are ditches around Royal Oaks. If you, when you put the new streets, reconstruct the whole area in 2013, I guess you're going to bring it up to one year, all this water will apparently go into the retention pond here. We call it Lake Royal. This is quite extensive because we have flooding in the streets big time here on the 100-year rain and the 1,000-year rain. Here, I know we drive where the water pumping station is for City of Wooddale, which is very important, they're in there two or three times a week. And we're going to be spending on this project approximately $3.5 million, maybe more, because the street report was done in 2008. So it may go up. In order to protect the resources of Wooddale, this watershed report, the engineering report, should be comprehensive to include water coming in from the north, water coming in from the south of Royal Oaks, water coming in from the west, water coming in from the east. So that this, the resources that the City of Wooddale are going to spend for this project, nothing will come back to you, that you've considered everything.
Right.
I think I can go into a lot of detail on this, but I rely upon the expertise of Dave Graff to review this in the correct way, in a comprehensive way, so that it isn't made, any part of it isn't made worse than it already is. Because this water and the ditches and everything is standing water, and that water stands until it evaporates, and it doesn't go into this retention pond. The DNR, Department of Natural Resources, was out here in 2009 in late summer, and they determined, and we're going to get a report on that, and we're going to submit it to our Wooddale City Engineer, Dave Graff. And this report included the depth of this retention pond. The greatest depth of this retention pond is here, at six-and-a-half feet. The rest of it is at four-and-a-half feet. That has to be considered in order to make the proper determination on how to handle this water, including retrofitting this piping on the pond if necessary. There are more facts regarding the engineering problem, but I'll leave that to date. Right now, I want to talk about one problem here that we're having. Six months, there's a light here going out to Route 83.
Frank, can you lift that microphone up?
There's a light going out to Route 83, right here. That light has been out for six months, and the senior citizens of Royal Oaks are rolling their eyes when I tell them to be patient, because I reported it a number of times. That is a special light, it's hard to get parts. But they're getting real impatient now, and I wish you would review that light and see if that can be fixed or eliminated, if it's not necessary. Also...
I'm just going to stop you just for a second. Mr. Kramer, do we have that noted? Okay. And then will you be able to get back to Frank? Just give him status on where we're at?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. There are one other, one other area here. It's again on the retention pond. And as we go up to Royal Oaks, up on Royal Oaks Drive, we have a beehive drain here, which always clogs up, and a beehive drain in the sidewalk right there. And we have fountains in this pond that shoot the water up that we take out in the winter. However, we also have aerators here and here. And that's the key and significance regarding my speech to take into consideration tonight for the City of Wooddale, as well as for ourselves. I'm going to hand out this paper that appeared in Sunday's Tribune with the Alderman Schawke. And this was an 11-year-old boy, I guess in a homeowners association, who drowned when he went into a pond that was aerated, and he couldn't get out. He went in early in the morning, nobody heard him. And he had a problem in getting out of this pond, and he drowned, the dog did too. Now, on these aerators that are here and here, it creates oval pattern, and the residents around this area, this area, residents here are all worried about these aerators being let on in the wintertime. And my rec... And my recommendation in reviewing this area and regarding the newspaper report that we have is to, for the City of Wooddale, if they'd be so kind, is to issue a letter to the President and the Board of Directors of Royal Oaks Association each year and tell them to turn off those aerators. Because I am told by highly qualified people in the City of Wooddale that this retention pond is our responsibility. And this retention pond...